Hi, David.
We're on.
Are we, are you ready? We're on. Okay, good evening and thank you for being here. This is the public hearing special meeting, September the seventeenth. The purpose of this meeting is approve the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget. We've already taken a poll on the tax rate. We've all reviewed the budget line item by line item. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six budget.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget.
I'll second it.
It's written?
Yeah, it is written.
You have to do it.
Yes, so Mr. McWerder.
Yay.
Mr. Toll.
Yay, yay.
Ms. Fidler. Mr. Von Derland. Justin, Mr. Gregory is absent. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn the special meeting for approval of the budget?
All in favor? Motion carries, our twenty twenty-six budget has been approved. Ms. Williams, I've got the signed copy here for you. Now then, we'll roll right into our regular council meeting. We had it back to back today, rather than have a special meeting tonight and then the council meeting tomorrow night. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We've got a quorum, I've established a quorum. Mr. McWerder, would you give the invocation, please?
Father, we just, we just come to you again today and we just thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve our community. We just thank you, Lord, for your presence here. We know you're here. We just ask that you guide, direct our thoughts and our questions and our decisions. Lord, we pray that you be with our country, Lord, as things happen around us that are concerning and impact our society, Lord, we just pray that you be with, you be with us as leaders and as community in how we react and speak and search for, for common grounds with those that disagree with us that are different than a bullet. Or we just, we just pray for, for that kind of discourse in our community. Well, we just thank you for all you do with us this evening in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any communication from? No, okay. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting of August the twenty-first.
I'll so move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Mayor's report, well, we're completing many of the road projects. Mill Creek is done. Ivanhoe Drive from the highway to Camelot Drive intersection will be complete once the punch list is inspected and accepted. The final repairs on Lake Camelot Circle are done. Galahad Loop is almost done. Once that's done, we'll be able to close out most of the eleven million dollar grant. Camelot Dam is coming along nicely and lakey construction has applied for their third progress payment. I know that the culvert's there, I've had a number of people worried that the lake is going to be a retention pond. Once the, there'll be a ninety-degree elbow at the end of the culverts in the lake that will actually raise the body of water almost a foot above what it was before the breach of the dam, so be patient with us on this. We're near awarding the contract for the construction of Lake Ivanhoe Dam. Bins were opened July the thirtieth. Southeast Construction was a low bidder and it's on the agenda for approval of the recommended award from LJA Engineering. Construction was supposed to begin Monday of this week on Ivanhoe Drive from Camelot Intersection to Charmaine Drive East. The project is scheduled to take seventeen days. The new start date now is October the third. They have begun to stage the culverts at Mayberry and Ivanhoe Drive. That'll be the first order of business once they start breaking ground. LJ Engineering is still working on the design for the S-turn from, on Lakewood from Tristan Dam to the tree. They are ninety percent complete. Once completed, the plans will then go to TCEQ for their blessing and that timeframe is completely unknown, will be at the mercy of TCEQ's timetable. The Comprehensive Plan Grant is still moving forward, the base studies are in the engagement portal. If you want to see it or make comments, contact me in my office and we'll get you the portal information. That's it for the mayor's report, many thanks to everyone that's involved. Chief Drum, please, sir. Welcome back.
Thank you. All right, mayor council, for last month, we had sixty-three calls for service, eighteen citations, twelve warnings, and two arrests. Couple of notes, all calls for service need to go through the sheriff's office. Keep reiterating this every month, that way everybody knows. Facebook, Snapchat, Instagram, whatever social media platform you want to use is not the appropriate way, calling somebody directly is not the way. It needs to go through the sheriff's office or through City Hall during the daytime. Watch your speed, Mill Creek. I know I've talked about this a couple of months in a row, we're seeing speeds fifty, sixty, seventy. Was it eighty? Okay, we call it one to an eighty, so it's not a raceway, the speed limit is thirty. Kids, we're not seeing as many kids on golf carts anymore, I guess because they're back in school or the families from the Houston area aren't coming up here as much on the weekends anymore, so hopefully we'll start seeing a decrease in that aspect.
Athletic sports also.
Athletic sports, cheer, dance, band, everything else. Those kids that are usually driving the golf carts are involved in extra cricket activities on Thursday, Friday nights. Watch your dogs, we're seeing a problem with dogs still out. Dogs barking all night long, there is ordinance on that, noise ordinance. They make complaints, then we'll start following up with them regarding dogs barking. I had a complaint today about dogs barking all night long, making a bunch of noise, so just take care of your dogs, keep them inside if you can, that's the best bet. If not, don't abandon them out there. All right, any questions for me? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall, if you will, sir.
I will, I will, just because it's you, I will. In just a minute.
Okay.
Ready to go. August twenty twenty-five, we received twelve work orders, completed seven of those. We put in six different headwalls on the project to narrow it down to one remaining.
So how many cement bags, how many eighty-pound cement bags was that?
I don't know, let me see, I was gonna wait till next month, but since you're pushing me. One thousand nine hundred and twenty-one bags. One hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty pounds. Eighty-four, or eighty-one point eighty-four tons. Had a lot of concrete for three men.
Yes, sir, it is.
And it took them twenty-nine days to do that. Twenty-nine days.
How many total?
One thousand, excuse me, a hundred.
Bulkheads, how many total?
That, I'd have to go back and look.
So there were seventy.
I'll have that for us next month.
There were seventy culverts at thirty-something locations.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
So when you get done with that last bulkhead, I propose that.
A drink?
I throw, a drink, but probably Pepsi or Dr. Pepper along with several pizzas down there for the guys.
Sounds good, they deserve it.
Yeah.
They do deserve it, that. They, they worked and worked, it didn't matter if it was too hot, I tried to tell them, let's just do some in the morning, come summer, it didn't matter, they were out there doing them, so.
Yeah, it's.
Good, good bunch of guys.
Bet you they're all more buff than they were before.
Pretty much. Pretty much. Those are some numbers, and I have more accurate numbers for next month's report.
I certainly hope so.
Okay, I'll talk to everybody but you.
You want to talk dams?
Well, I'm not through with the other one yet.
Oh, oh!
Got some more streets to go over.
Apologies, sir.
It's okay, I'll let it go this time. Now, we've, like, we've got the one, the one set of headwalls to do. You're only looking at like another two hundred and sixty-something bags, so they should be able to knock that one out in about half a day or so. Moving on to the dams. I know we're moving and looking towards some exploratory work to be done on Galahad.
Yes, sir.
And the one repair here on Charmaine is going to be done by the same company, if I understood you correctly.
Yes, sir, Epoxy Design, they're the ones that put the hundred and fifty cubic yards of flowable grout into Charmaine Dam.
Our, our dams have all been inspected with the correct TECQ forms for this last month in August, we do it once a month. Everything looked good, the typical, too much vegetation here, that kind of stuff, that's just routine maintenance, it's going to come up every month, except during the winter. We have not completed our, our study on the, whatever you call those things that you found for us.
The, the plastic gap sealers, whatever it's, I don't know what you call it.
The plastic gaps. We have not finished our, our study on the PBSs. But we will, and get back with everybody how they're holding up, if we're going to be able to use them price-wise, so much, so forth and so on.
So you may, you probably remember that I showed the, the samples at a previous council meeting and they've, they've inserted them in, in the cracks.
Yep. That's about us, about it for us, unless y'all have got some questions. Business as usual. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moncrief? It's time to talk about the P and Z activity. Yes, sir, please. Yes, sir, please. No, no pressure. So we went over the ordinance at the last council meeting, I don't believe there were any changes to that, were there? So what we were, what we were looking at, the, the question was the recommended fees for.
Yes.
For, for registering on Airbnb and Mr. Gregory wanted to have everything together in one, one package, so.
Yeah.
Carolyn took it and, and you've been, y'all have been good enough to get this back to us with recommended pricing for permitting fees.
Well, we'd like to just interrupt as far as that. My understand, I mean, what we've been doing is just, in the, this chart here.
Yes, sir.
Those were just examples, samples, just so you could see how the math worked.
Oh, the recommended fees?
Yes, the recommended fees and the penalties like that, but our understanding as far as, was that these are just examples that you, the city council or was either going to set those or.
Or accept them.
Or accept them, or, you know, let us, you know, change them or whatever, so those are just examples, the dollar, dollar amounts for the fee and the penalty. This is what we kind of, as far as planning zoning count members. We kind of came up with that, those numbers, but they're not, we know they're not for sure, I guess.
So the, the fees for, let's see, primitive camping is fifty dollars, six hundred to nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet is a hundred and fifty dollars, a thousand square foot or bigger is two hundred and fifty dollars. Based on the number of Airbnbs that are here, the fees that are recommended would cover the cost of I-Works to manage the program?
We didn't, I mean, we don't know how many Airbnb, or rental property, short-term rental properties there are, but we're estimating that there should be. But again, these fees, we were just recommended fees, we were kind of looking at just what would be reasonable, not punitive, but reasonable.
Yes, sir.
To cover costs and also, you know, basing that on kind of what we've seen as far as when you go on like Airbnb website or Verbo and see what the daily rates are, so. So that's how we kind of came up with the recommended fees.
And these are annual fees?
Correct, yes.
Renewable every year?
Yes.
That should not, that, that's, that's, I think, fair and reasonable.
Yeah, we didn't want to ma, I said, didn't want to make it punitive and, I mean, they're, they're here, that's fine, but we do recognize that that can add to the, that can add additional costs to the city.
Yeah.
As far as resources and things like that.
Wanting to cover it well.
Yes.
And having a registration, knowing who the owners are and contact information would allow the police department to know whom to talk to in the event that there's an issue of any kind that's taking place that requires law enforcement's involvement.
Yes, and what, we're, we kind of understand that, like, especially like Airbnb and Verbo, the big ones.
Yes, sir.
They, they screen the property owners beforehand to see, because one ins and outs, but I do know as a former claims adjuster that with three big insurance companies, that rental, you know, rental property or is different than your own homeowner's insurance, and so, but that's something that, you know, needs to be taken into consideration also.
In what way?
Well.
For them or for the city?
Well, for, for the home property owner.
Yeah.
Also for any claimant.
Okay, okay.
I, I heard that we had, there was a, some people were renting, you know, renting an Airbnb and they ran the, I don't know whether it was their own or rented jet ski into somebody else's dock and caused some damage. So is the, that you get into is the operator of the jet ski, I mean, they, you know, have insurance or is it goes, goes back on the property owner or what, like that, so. But I do know, but just going back, I mean, air, some of the bigger companies, they screen that, so. But that is something to take into consideration as far as the city and other property owners, you know, who's liable if there's property damage, so.
So.
Is that in, I'm sorry, is that in this?
No, no, we decide, as far as plans, I mean, the city of Ivanhoe necessarily can't, shouldn't really get involved.
It's basically private property.
Yes, yes, and that's up to the, the property owner and their insurance company or how they want to handle their own liability, so.
So the city's not going to get in?
No.
So it may, it may, if, if they run into, if this jet ski runs into a dock, it's almost like something happening at a Walmart parking lot, it's, it's.
It's, it's.
You have to take care of it yourself.
Murky water, it's complicated, yes.
Yeah, it's complicated, it's murky waters, I like that.
Yes, so.
How long on Airbnb can somebody rent it for?
Oh.
You know, like if somebody claims they're an Airbnb, but then they start renting the house out for months, can they do that?
Well, what, I think in the language, we tried to specify whether it's short-term rental versus long-term rental. So if somebody decides they want to rent their house, you know, have a six-month contract or a twelve-month, that's, that wouldn't be considered a, a short-term rental. So we're just, I think in the definitions.
We don't, we don't have any control over what people do with their property, they can have it as an Airbnb or they can turn it into a long-term rental if they feel like that's their best route to.
Well, yes.
I mean, it's, it's not our concern.
Yeah, actually, I don't think it's in this ordinance, but we put it in, I'm sorry? In the first, yeah. Thirty, okay, yeah. It's not in this part of it, this was just about the fees and penalties, but we did kind of, we did try and address that as far as use of the parks and lakes. So if you're, if you come in and rent a house here for twelve months, we kind of figure that that's.
Long-term.
Long-term.
Yeah.
Versus if you're just renting for three or four days on the weekend, so. And if that changes, well, that, if they went from short-term rental and decided to go to a long-term rental, I mean, if they paid their fee for the year, then that's fine, then the next year, if they still do the, still have it as long-term rental, then.
They don't have a fee.
Correct, yes, yes, so.
So you have any?
Well, I just was looking at the fees, I mean, I just, we, we think there's fifteen or so now, is the reality of them, or there more?
There's over twenty.
I guess we're gonna, we're not going to know until we get the software, right? Basically, we won't know until we get the software.
We know there's at least twenty.
We know there's twenty.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, when I look at it, I mean, I, I, I might lower, when I'm thinking of it, the, the, the top fee down, I mean, I don't know why we picked two fifty over two hundred, maybe, but I mean, that's, you know, I, I just think one of these houses being rented, they being rented thirty times a month, thirty times a year, forty times a year, I'm, I'm not sure, so I don't, I just don't know. It's not a huge difference in price, but, you know, we're.
Well, one of them.
We're trying to get to two thousand dollars, right, is what our cost of software's going to be?
About twenty-five hundred.
About twenty-five hundred, yeah. You're splitting hairs.
Yeah. There's one here that's over a thousand square feet, that's one of the highest-priced Airbnbs on Airbnb.
Yeah, and it's rented regularly.
Yes, it is regularly.
Really nice home.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I don't have any other questions, I mean, I'd be.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with what Charles' recommendation was, if council is, I mean. You don't have a?
No.
Oh, you got the, you got the, did you see it?
I don't have it.
Chuck, the, the fees?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we got that.
Okay.
Now, if we end up with a surplus this year, can we, how easy is it to lower the fees if we end up with a surplus of, you know, for like next year?
Well, we don't know if there's going to be an increase in the I-Works moving forward, so anything that's over that, we would set aside. It's not a lot of money in the overall scheme of things. Administratively, it's just cleaner to take whatever we decide is the fee for the, the registration.
Will this be October first or January first?
Haven't really settled upon that yet.
Yeah, I mean, we kind of, well, we had the intent of, obviously, for compliance to have some teeth in this.
Yes.
But how you get compliance, that's up for, you know, decision later, I guess, I mean, or come up, come up with.
So Haley, which would be the easiest administratively for the office?
I think January to December, because I-Works runs on a calendar year.
A calendar year, okay.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be, it'll be January to December.
So do we even need to pay for I-Works then in this year?
No, not until we, well, we're going to be in a new year in a couple of weeks, so.
We're going to have a pro-rated amount for this year and then next year we'll pay full amount.
How do we plan on letting these homeowners know about these new fees?
They'll, we'll let them know, we'll send them a letter.
Yeah, they, we'd send them snail mail, email, you know, a couple of different ways to let them know that this ordinance has passed and, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just curious, do you wanna make sure that?
Oh, yes, yeah.
That they're, you know, especially for donations.
Right, we, we figured, I mean, they need to be notified, cause if they wait until, you know, July of next year and they wanna rent it out for, uh, for the summer, and they say, well, I never knew about that, well, we wanna make sure they know about that, so.
And that's it?
Yes, yes, that's only fair.
Any further discussion, did want to? Is anybody ready to make a motion to accept the, uh, the ordinance and the fees as presented, recommended, recommended by P and Z?
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh oh two.
I'll second it.
Along with the fees, as a?
As fees, as depicted in here.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you very, very much, Curtis and P and Z, the members of P and Item number five, uh, there's, they, they, they did not have a meeting this past month, so there's nothing to report there. Item six, consider for discussion, the canceling of the twenty twenty-five general election. Uh, we don't have to hold an election because there are three spots and two candidates. There's a process that Ms. Williams will have to go through, she's already started it, I need a motion to.
I make a motion to cancel the election meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, very good, thank you.
I abstained, by the way, I'm on the ballot.
Sir?
So I abstained, I was on the ballot.
Thank you. Not that it mattered.
It did matter, but I just, I'm on the record.
I know, I know, I appreciate that. Number seven, consider for discussion, the engineering company's recommendation for the contract to be let to Lake, for a Lake Ivanhoe dam to be rebuilt. The program grant recommendation for Southeast Texas Construction, C-Tex, S-E-T-E-X Corporation. You've got the, uh, the bids that came in, one was, Lakey was two point, point four nine seven million dollars, the, uh, Alcoa LLC was two point oh four two million dollars, Southeast Texas was one point seven million dollars, H.C. Oilfield's bid was incomplete and dis, uh, disqualified, C.E. Barker was two point six million, solid bridge construction was two point nine million, and Aaron Davis Construction was two point nine million. We were fortunate to get as many bids as we did get because we have gone out before and only had one response. So the recommendation is that we award the contract to Southeast Texas Construction. I would, uh, is there any, any, uh, discussion on it?
So, we haven't done business with them before.
We have not, no.
LJA has done business with them before?
LJA did the, uh, due diligence on the recommendations, the references, uh, the performance bond, uh, the credentials of all parties involved with the company, and found them to be capable of doing this job. So you should have.
Yeah, I'm looking at, I was looking at.
Yeah.
And, and this is mostly dirt work.
Yes, it's all dirt work. So, there's a couple of things that are going on with, uh, with the, the lake bed. I tried every, which way I could to get them to clear the lake bed, but GLO doesn't like the word "clear." I tried to reword it as many ways as I could without using that word, uh, that just would not get through, so I've made the rounds, I talked to people on the, that would be on the lake and told them to help us, help them, they should start cutting trees down and just drop them, they don't have to do anything with them, just drop them. Carl, I wanna say Weber, Carl Munch has offered to take his machine out there, and he's got, uh, one, somebody that lives on that, that dry lake that has a, um, a skid steer that has a, a, an attachment that, that will take the trees and wobble them back and forth and pull them up by the roots. Uh, I, I've told them that they can, they don't wanna start bef, too soon because they don't want them to grow back, but they're gonna go out there and, and, uh, start taking trees down and piling them up. The contractor also has indicated that they may go out there and just bulldoze a bunch of stuff down to make room, uh.
For storage.
For, yeah, so, so they'll have a lay-down yard in the lake, and that's the, that's, uh, the hope that they'll be able, that they will do that on their own and help us clear those trees out of the lake bed. So it will be a retention pond, but it will also be holding water, uh, which is about what it was doing before.
What, uh, what kind of spillway or level control would that be?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, they were talking about there being, uh, you know, an overflow that would come out east of the, the old store, kinda where the, the dump station was. Uh, the other is that there's gonna be some, some drainage valve at the other end, uh, where the breach was. So that's, that's all I can recall about it at the moment.
There, there's already a spillway there, I mean, when it, there's water, there's only, there's, it, it clears that road.
Well, you're on that lake, and so is Ms. Williams. Well, maybe if it, uh, if it.
It's a runoff.
If it, if it holds more water than it did before, maybe it.
I'm supposed to put some water behind my head.
So, I'd like a, a motion to accept LJA's recommendation of Southeast Texas Construction to rebuild the Lake Ivanhoe Dam.
Uh, make a motion that we accept a bid of Southeast Texas of one point seven six nine four sixty-five forty-two for construction of the Lake Ivanhoe Dam.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Consider discussion for some modification to the, to the handbook. First up is the, uh, the holiday schedule.
Who's that outside?
Yeah. It's raining. So, uh, the, we're, we're gonna keep the existing holidays that we had, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, New Year's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day, but we're gonna come in line with the same holiday schedule that Tyler County has, and that will include Columbus Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, and Juneteenth. So, um, I would like a motion to accept the change in the holiday schedule to be in line with Tyler County.
I make a motion to accept the holidays as read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
She seconded.
Any discussion?
We already voted.
Okay. Well, excuse me.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we already voted.
Okay.
Discussion is mute.
Next is the, uh. PTO.
Get back for you, see ya.
So, the PTO time used to be rather convoluted and hard to, you needed to bounce it off the city attorney to understand how many PTO hours you had based on your time in service and whether you were full-time, part-time, or full-time, part-time. Haley has gone through the, uh, the handbook and it's being rewritten, uh, we're, we're meeting, uh, legal requirements that have been in place that, for a long time, that we've not been following. So this, this now is the new PTO chart. Full-time employees, forty hours a week, first year they'll get twenty-four hours annually, second and third year of employment eighty hours, the third year a hundred and twenty hours, and at five years, they get a hundred and sixty hours, which is basically four weeks, and it's, it, it plateaus there, that's the ceiling. That's actually better than what the original was that we're changing from. Part-time employees for thirty-two hour work week, so that's full-time, part-time, right? First year is twenty hours, second year is sixty-four hours, third year is ninety-six hours, and over five years is a hundred and twenty-eight hours. Part-time employees, part-time, part-time employees, working twenty-four hours for, per week, they'll get sixteen hours the first week, uh, first year, fifty hours the second, seventy-five the third, and over five years, they'll get a hundred hours annually. Is there any discussion on this?
So how do we handle people leaving in the middle of a year? That, what I read is these are awarded at the beginning of the year, so they're not done as the year progresses. How are we going to handle someone leaving and why, and paying, do we have, are we therefore liable for that PTO that's not been taken at that point?
Texas, you could lose it.
What they've.
By law, you're saying by Texas law?
By law, Texas, if you could lose it, so you don't have to pay them.
Okay.
We can if we choose to.
If they have accrued vacation, we would owe them that money.
Well, that, what I read is that accrues at the beginning of the year, so if you start the year with four years, you're gonna get, uh, thirty-five, they're gonna get a hundred and twenty hours in your PTO, and you start using it, and if by, you leave six months in and you only use sixty hours, by law, you're saying we don't have to pay them that sixty.
Texas, you could lose it.
Okay, that's what I was.
You don't have to pay them.
Okay. Now, some, some PTOs accrue over time, but ours, what I'm reading doesn't, it's just we're lump summing it at the beginning of the year, is that correct?
So, yeah, so at, at the first of the year, you get this block of hours. And, and they're all available right then. If you use them up before the end of the, before the first six months and you leave in six months.
You, you did good, you used them all up.
Well, the, the, we would hold some of that final paycheck to pay us back for that time.
Okay.
You can do that?
Is that legal? I don't know if that's legal, I don't know. I don't think that's legal.
It, well, if it's not, then it's a loss that we would just absorb and go along.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that, that's what it's written.
That'd be the simple, that'd be the safe thing to do.
I think it's written, the way it's written is which, it's a simple way to manage it.
Yeah.
Um, is that they get, we give it all to them and then we manage it over, and then you just don't pay it if they leave early, but if someone's gonna leave, they'll probably start taking PTO quite heavily, but that's how it kinda, that's an indicator.
It is, yeah.
It's written in their PTO.
That's an indicator.
And no one's eligible until their ninety-day mark anyway.
Yeah.
So, at ninety days, that's when you pay.
How many people does the change from ten years to five years impact today? We said it's you, right, you're one, anybody else in our, in our, in our city that it impacts? I don't think so.
Well, he, we're gonna exclude him.
But I mean, do we know how many employees in the city impacts, have, have between five and ten years today?
No, just David.
Just David, I think the only other person that's been.
Colby might be close.
Colby might be close, and Drum might be close, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think the impact financially to the, to the thing, I mean, I think it's a good benefit.
Yeah, Drum might be.
He might be close, I don't know.
Oh, did he leave?
I guess so. Yeah, I, I think it's a big, I mean, it's, it's not a huge financial impact today and it's a good benefit for the people, so.
You know, that's all we have, we don't have retirement, we don't have insurance, and I've looked into both. Insurance through debt cog is, was eight hundred dollars a month per person, and even if we split that with, with the employee, they would not be able to pay that.
Yeah.
Um, with, uh, Texas Municipal Retirement League, I've investigated that, and it requires a, a lump sum money from the city up front to catch people up for their longevity and, in their current positions, and then, you know, we'd have to start managing and deducting those monies. The real kicker is that there, if, if there's anybody on the payroll that's drawing social security, they would have to stop drawing social security in order for everybody else to be able to participate, no pressure, but I don't expect. I really do not think that that's something that we could expect.
Yeah.
Out of an individual.
No, I think it's reasonable.
I, I'm just, you know, I mean, it's, the, the point is, it's, it, we've looked at it and it's not, it, it's not there, all we have is.
Yeah, I think it's a nice benefit for our employees, it's something that we can do.
Yeah, how many, how many employees do we have? Is it?
Eight, nine.
Nine?
So, okay.
So, Steve, how long have you been here?
Uh, since twenty twenty.
So you've hit five years, so you would get the, the, the four weeks of vacation?
That's good, yeah, that's good.
Starting.
That's what I was wondering, I was just curious.
Starting January. But I may buy some of them. So, do we have a motion to accept the, uh, the change in the PTO?
I make a motion to accept the change in the PTO?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sir?
I noticed, it just says that the paid time office begins October first and ends September thirtieth.
Uh, okay, oh, that's on the fiscal year. You, you would rather January to January, or?
No, fiscal year.
Fiscal year's fine, okay, so we're, that's what it's been. Personally, I like calendar year, but, I mean, fiscal year is what it is.
Keep up with one year.
Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now then, comp time. This, the original, uh, comp time was written when the police officers were working two-two-five schedule, we're, we don't do that much, we don't do that anymore. Uh, they have scheduled days and scheduled hours. The law has changed some, uh, we were, we were putting more on the chief than what we were supposed to be, and, uh, Ms. Williams has to keep up with comp time through payroll now, uh, to be compliant. So the, the change, the city of Ivanhoe recognizes that police officers may be required to work more than their scheduled weekly hours. These hours must be approved by the immediate supervisor, these hours, it's hard to approve something before, beforehand, uh, so we, we, we just need a, a, a method of keeping up with it. These hours can be accrued for use as personal time off. Police officer may only accrue compensated time that is approved up to forty hours annually, and a police officer may roll over twenty hours of comp time to the next year, and, um, may lose anything over the twenty hours at October first if not used, so if you got comp time, use it in the, within the, the same year, up to, if you wanna move twenty hours over, you can. Is there any discussion on that from?
How much are y'all accruing now, chief?
Uh, over this last year, I had forty-eight hours, and I'm taking some this month.
Okay. So it's a regular occurrence?
Not always, but it.
It's lumpy, it's lumpy, there's like, in one month, you'll have a lot, and it's.
Some months you could, yes, I mean, if you, let's say, you're here ready to get off shift and you get a call and you have a mental health person.
Yeah.
You may be stuck on that person for two or three hours, which has just recently happened, uh.
Or you could, you could have a truck fire up here just right outside of Ivanhoe.
It's funny, it's lumpy, it's not an everyday thing, it's, it's lumpy.
Right.
When you need it, you need it, when you, huh?
Lumpy, that's a technical term.
It's a tough, technical term.
So that carries over from year, calendar year to calendar year?
No.
No.
Just twenty hours.
Just, just twenty hours will go to the next year, so.
So it's a use or lose it?
Yeah.
It's not.
Well, not, not, you, you use it or, or up to, you can roll over twenty hours.
Anything over twenty is lose it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is comp time hated, like, is? Is comp time hated, is it time and a half, so?
No, it's hour for hour.
Hour for hour.
Make a motion that we approve the, the change in compensated time rules for the City of Ivanhoe, as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, consider for discussion, Texas Materials bid. We, last, last month, we moved sixteen thousand dollars from one fund to another to be able to pay for this. We got, you have the quote there from Texas Materials to pave Camelot Drive from Durwood to Toller Road.
Yep.
The, pardon?
Bond. Bond money?
Yeah, this is-
Sixteen thousand.
Okay, I stand corrected. The sixteen thousand was for Elite Construction to make that repair on Charmaine Drive South. We've already had that approval, we've already told Elite Construction, and we, I don't know, David, have you talked to them about a start date?
No, I've got a phone call into Mr. Barlow.
Mr. Barlow, okay. So, we should be starting on that repair pretty soon.
I didn't know his guy was out, his foreman was out looking at it.
Okay.
Trying to put everything together.
So, this is, this is bond money. We have seventy-four thousand dollars remaining in, in the road bond, and this money has to be used strictly for roads. Camelot, we, we've been putting road base down there for a long time and packing it down. It's actually road base that we've purchased from Texas Materials. They've looked at it, recognized it. They said that they would, they would pave that road from Durwood to the back gate for forty-five thousand dollars. They paved from Charmaine Drive South to Durwood, and it was eighteen thousand. The length of road from Durwood to the back gate is quite a bit longer than, they, they said that they would pave the parking lot from Charmaine Drive East to that, to where the IPOA sign is at no charge to us. That would be nice, to get that entrance into the city cleaned up. So, the, the pricing, they said if mobilizations required, they would, they say please add five thousand dollars, but they're, all their equipment is here already, so there's no, should be no mobilization charge incurred. There's no bond or special insurance. I don't know what AGC dues are. AGC, Alpha Golf Charlie?
General Counsel.
Wow, I don't know. There's fees, permits, and SWPPP? I don't know what that is.
Silt fences.
Silt, okay, so, yeah, barricades, with, subgrade preparation, maintenance of the drop offs, and the shoulder up. Initially, they said no warranty, but David got with them, and we at least get a ninety-day warranty. They've agreed to a ninety-day warranty for their work, which is, which is good. And then subsidiary work on intersection, driveways, and turnouts. The price is for paving only. This is something that I think that we, we probably need to go ahead and do.
So, the base is good enough? That we're going over the base that's there?
Yes, sir.
They're just gonna level it and pave it?
We've been putting base on that section of road for the last eight years.
Yeah, so.
It's, it's-
It's got enough on it.
So, we're confident in the base?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Because we're gonna have to repair it, because we only get ninety days warranty, so, okay.
They may squeeze that out to a hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, we're doing, if we're giving them business, I mean, they're, they're gonna be-
It's been that many shots to have.
There you go.
So, just for the record, would you kind of explain what your thoughts are on the, on the, the quote and the dollar figure that they've given us and the work that they're proposing? Stand up there. No pressure, against the wall. Against the wall.
I used to do this for a living, there's no pressure. Forty-five grand seems like a lot of money, but you have to consider, we're at a million dollars a mile nowadays to get roadwork done. But a lot of that cost is the engineering fee, the, everything that you named off, that we don't need to pay for at this time for that particular stretch of road. We've put a lot of time in it, we've put a lot of material in it. Forty-five thousand's not a bad price for that. Would I like to see lower? You bet, but it's just not gonna happen with the price of everything today. Now, they'll come in, they'll blade it, they'll blade it smooth, they'll pack it down, they'll roll it, they'll come in with a prime coat that's going to seal it, and then they will come back on with their tack coat after that, put two inches of type D asphalt, I wanna make sure it's type D asphalt.
Yes, sir.
And then roll it in, and we should be good. What was that? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it'll definitely be two inches, though, and not-
I will not settle for anything less than two inches. I would prefer three, but at some point, they always tell me no. Shoulder up, I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
It says they're not going to- No shoulders or, or turnouts, is what it says in the, in the bid.
We can handle the shoulder up with our material, but I'll, I'll see if I can't-
How many turnouts are there?
I hope they're not listening. See if I can't squeeze the, blading the shoulders is nothing. If we furnish the material, they're gonna have the equipment, let's let them do it.
Yeah.
I, I think I can get that done.
So, the only, the only driveways that I know of are Rex Curry's place.
Yeah, yeah, so that's not-
That's, yeah, that's nothing.
Yeah, so, I think it's a good deal.
And there's no inter, well-
Well, that road is used more today than it ever has been. I mean, I came in today.
It, it is, and it's been a pain in the, to, for us to try and keep it up. I mean, after every rain, there's, there's not potholes anymore, but there's, there's swells, and it's, we've gotta continually do maintenance on it. And, and we get this asphalt on there, the maintenance will cease, that's just that much more money that we can save on patching material and do other things.
Well, in time also.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right.
That's all, my, all the questions I have.
Okay, okay.
Do we have a motion to move forward? Any questions, any other comments, discussion?
I make a motion to accept this budget.
The second?
The second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
When is it gonna start?
Their equipment is here, they've got Ivanhoe Drive that they're gonna-
I'm looking at him, because he's gotta squeeze them.
Okay, my bad, my bad.
I would imagine within thirty days. I would think seventeen, fifteen or seventeen on the other one.
Yeah, they, once they, once they start, they said that they would do Ivanhoe Drive from Camelot Intersection to Charmaine Drive East in seventeen days.
Yeah, I, I would, I would think for sure. If weather plays along.
Oh, yeah, I just, I was just curious. I figured it'd be pretty quick, because their equipment's here. Yeah, you wanna do it while it's here.
Exactly, exactly, I don't want that mobilization fee.
No.
Yeah, cool.
Ms. Williams?
Hi, Chris. I was trying to switch the camera. They don't like it when they can't see who's speaking.
Oh.
I just make sure. All of the financial documents and the bank statements were sent to counsel on September 12th, including the account, financial reports, and the reconciliation details for each account. The state comptroller direct deposited nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars on September 12th for sales and use taxes that were collected in July and reported to the comptroller in August. The August ad valorem taxes were received September totaling nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, with seven thousand nine hundred and seventy going to maintenance and operations, and one thousand eight hundred and eighteen for the interest and sinking fund. We received no payment for Ivanhoe North. We won't see an uptick in ad valorem taxes till probably November, December, when people start paying on their taxes and getting their tax bills. The Texas class interest rates showed no significant changes, remaining about four-point-two percent throughout another month. Nothing new with Citizen State Bank. After reviewing the totals for the various departments, the budgets are correct, the bank statements have been reconciled, and I believe the August financials can be approved,
Any questions, any discussion?
I was just looking at some of the, trying to remember, I thought there was one entry I had a question on, but I can't, I can't find it. Oh, the vehicle repair, what did we have for the officer vehicle repair? This, I saw like two grand for this month, do you know what that was?
What did we do on your trucks?
That's when Travis finished up everything, you mentioned, for the trucks.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we had Travis Black, it was radios and wiring, computers.
He brought the Explorer up to operational use.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Explorer only has a little over sixty thousand miles on it.
Yeah, that was, that was one that, that just popped out at me, I didn't really expect. When we had done our, I bounced it up against it, and we hadn't really anticipated that, so, okay.
When we do our monthly run rates, to see how we're gonna end the year.
We got popped again for the attorney, but I know that's gonna probably continue.
We still have that.
Yeah, we, we try, we're, we're, we're trying to be very careful about what we're asking the city attorneys to do.
Very.
Understood. That's my last, my questions, thank you.
So, we have a motion to accept the financials?
Motion to accept the financials?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, ma'am. So, that concludes our business for this evening. Does anybody have anything to say?
I wanted to ask David, okay, last month, you talked about, you made a patch out here in the driveway with a bag of some kind of material.
Rock asphalt.
Rock asphalt, how's it?
Yes, sir.
Turn it off, turn it back on.
Please.
Good catch. Is that better? Yeah, we're on, we're on. Not, I'll just scream and yell. It, it seems to be doing much better than what we've been using. To me, it hadn't been that long to actually stand by that, but we are keeping a pretty close eye on, on the areas that we did use it in, and so far, so good. I'm, I'm waiting for the rain, as is everybody, but that's-
This is a patch for an asphalt road?
Yes, yes. Potholes, asphalt, you can blade it, a lot of things.
So, it's, it comes from Uvalde?
Mm-hmm.
There's, what, thirty thousand acres of this stuff down there that they, they pulverize, they dig it up and pulverize it. You don't have to do a lot to it, 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 pressure of driving over it or a tamper, he said you didn't need a tamper, but with a tamper, it packs it down and it activates some sort of catalyst that's within it, and it hardens like a, a piece of, like a rock.
Wow.
I mean, it's-
Yeah, you're, you're exactly right in what you're saying. It's, it's basically liquefied asphalt inside a dry casing.
Does it entwine with the asphalt that's already there anyway? Does it?
I don't know about when, the brand of asphalt that we have, I don't know, we haven't done that yet. I wouldn't think that it would be a problem.
I just wondered if it's adhering, and or if it's just a patch that's sitting there, or is it actually digging into the, the existing structure?
So far, what I can see-
It adheres.
It's, it's, it's working really, really well, and we can get it by the bag, which the guys hate, is, you can imagine, they're really tired of bags right now. They wanna get, you know, the, we can get-
With super totes.
Super tote, I think it's twenty-six hundred pounds?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. We, we can get it in bulk.
So, we, we went, we bought a pallet of the, the bags as an experiment, a trial run, and that was, what, twelve hundred dollars?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and did you put some down on the, like, on, have you already used some of it then?
Oh, we've used all of it. Various locations. We did the first one out here.
Yeah, that was the example that the salesman showed us.
Yeah, we, we've tried to pick areas that have been notorious for the pothole coming back. We picked areas where it's not so much a pothole as it is just so yadeep, it's odd-shaped. We've tried it in all the scenarios that we would normally go fix, so it's gonna be interesting to see. I don't wanna say, hey, after thirty days, it's good, but-
But the good thing is, it's got a three-year warranty, and so all you have to do is know where you put it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
Inside that three years.
Right, should. Hopefully, they would honor that. They said they would, at this point, I have no reason to not believe them, but we may very well have to call them out on that one day.
Well, I mean, if the first patch is any indicator, they're, they're pretty safe with their three-year warranty.
I think so. This stuff is really hardened up harder than any asphalt I've seen, even rolled asphalt. It's, it's, it's hard.
How long has it been? The pallet, you got, how long has it been in?
Three weeks, maybe?
Since the patch?
Yeah, since, since he's, yeah, since we put the patch in.
Yes, it's been at least three weeks since they put the patch out here.
How many range turns have we had in three weeks? That's we the test, right?
About zero, that's the test, yeah, yeah.
Have any of the tests failed or had problems?
No, everything is holding as it should.
I'll show you where the test was out here in the parking lot, it's right by that sign.
Yeah, we're gonna do-
The pallet, it has no shelf life.
No.
It's, it, it has no shelf life, or I, I should say it's an indefinite, unlimited shelf life.
Yeah, yeah.
It only, it only activates under pressure.
That's it, that's it, that's it, yeah. The one thing I do wanna try it on is a common occurrence. If we don't judge the pothole just right, instead of being, start off smooth when we're done, but in a short amount of time, it'll get some sag in it, and according to this company, that you can just come out with more of their material and put in that sag with nothing else, and, and roll it, and bring it back up to level, and it will adhere to itself.
Yeah, this, this little test pa, patch out here, he put, put the material in a hole and just ran his truck back and forth across the top of it, until he didn't have any tar, any tread marks on it.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard as concrete.
I have an area in my little driveway I need to put some on there. I need to buy a couple of bags.
I can hook you up with some bags, they sell them somewhere else. No, I don't think this thing is, if it is, it's under another name.
What's that?
The, the product, I don't think you're gonna find it at Lowe's or Home Depot or any of that.
Oh, rock asphalt?
Yeah, yeah.
It's probably all industrial.
It's all government, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They ship it to you, is that what they did? They ship it?
Free of charge.
Wow.
Yeah.
We make a call, and, and we, we can have it in two days.
Yep.
Either the super tote or the bags, a pallet of bags.
Either one, yep.
Now, is there a minimum weight or minimum quantity?
Nope, nope. We got that one pallet.
Yeah.
And they showed up on time, even called with, the instructions were for the driver to call, so he would know where, and he called, and we let him in, and he was just as good as he could be, and he unloaded it, everything was fine, no, no minimum requirement or no, no minimum amount needed. So, they're worth, they're worth trying and seeing, okay? Now, can I go sit down?
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or discussion? What kind of conclusion?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are so adjourned, thank you very much.